Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Paul and Board of Commissioners May 26, 2016 Work Session. We welcome our invited guests and elected officials. Kathy Carter we have here as High Arm City Councilperson. Any other elected officials? Am I missing anyone? Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Call a meeting order and ask you to silence at any of your devices. Put cell phones and papers. Y'all have papers? May I have a paper? Let you know how far behind, and I still have eight tracks. I'm going to do a invocation, please, so will you stand with me if you're ready? Lord, your words in my mouth and the meditation in my heart be acceptable unto thee, O Lord, our rock and our demon. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of being able to have fair elections in this country, in this state, and in this county. Lord, we bless all those who ran for office and those that were successful and will have other races in the future. Lord, bless them and give them the wisdom to help lead this county forward. Lord, we ask special blessing on our public safety. We ask for a special blessing on the military to allow us to have a free country and be able to make free decisions. All this is for the asking in thy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to warn you, ahead of time, we're going to try to move this along pretty quickly. Our county attorney has been invited to the governor's office. She's going down to see somebody being sworn in, and they sent her word. So I don't know if this is like going to the principal's office for a bad thing or a good thing, but I think it has to be for a good thing. So if you don't come back now, who's in your pledge? Minutes of May 10, 26, work session minutes and the May 10, 2016 board meeting minutes are available for review. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Jody Martin and Jeff Harkins. I know they are in the back, and I know that they can hear me, so if they would come forward.
Let me set up the cameras.
Does that mean they're coming? But again, they are being honored today with Paulding County Channel 23 for the foster care recruitment video that is now being used on a statewide basis to train new foster families and new trainers. And again, Kathy Carter with DFAX Region 3 Recruiter. Is it just you, or is she out?
Jeff's outside working. We're helping people.
You'll stand before the fire. Kathy, if you come to the left.
So I've got you in a PIP right here. So you stand there, and I got you.
I don't know the lingo, I'm sorry. I can start?
Yes.
All right, good.
You have the floor.
I'm here today. I'm a recruiter for the region, for DFAX, for foster homes. I don't know if y'all know about it, but there's a tremendous crisis in foster care today in our county, across our region, across the state, and really across the nation. Just to get, oh, I forgot, you told me to do this, and I didn't do it. Okay. There's a crisis in foster care. Here in Paulding County, we have 26 foster homes. Not all of them are available for children to be placed, except for waiting for their adoptions to be filed, but there are about 21, maybe 22 homes, and 162 children in foster care. So you can see that those numbers don't add up. And what that means is that our children have to be placed out of county. It's not unusual for a child to be placed in Columbus while its sibling may be placed in Augusta, and all of that further compounds having been removed from their families. So we make, well, I was going to retire. I'm an old social worker. I started doing social work when I was 24 years old, and I thought, I'm a grandma.
I thought you were about 10.
I'm a grandma, and I was going to, I gave my notice for November 1st. The crisis was so compelling, and they asked me if I would stay and only do recruitment, and I thought it sounded challenging, might be something I'd like to do. And I'm happy to say that at this point, we've really met our projections, but it's not enough. There are still so many children that are placed out of county. So what I did, we needed a recruiter, so they let me recruit, but we didn't have a budget for it. I made an appeal to the community, and Jody sent me an email, and he said, "We can do a video." So I'm here to thank the county commission for sharing your resources with us, but also thank you for Jody and Jeff, because they produced a video for us that is my most important tool. Everywhere I go, I use that 90-second video. And I'm just going to quickly tell you, because I know you said we need to get moving, that so far, it's been shown in 40 churches in Polk and Harrelson County. I just used it last week at a countywide conference in Douglasville. Everywhere I speak, I use that video. And there's a little girl in it, she's spoken here before. Her name is Hannah. She's 10 years old. She's National Miss Georgia. She came into care as a newborn, a substance-exposed newborn, and now she's the National Miss Georgia. And we think she's going to be Miss Georgia one day, and maybe Miss America. And she's the foster child, and we love to talk about her parents and Hannah and this video. Do we have time for me to show it to you? It's a 90-second video. Okay, I'm just going to go quickly.
I've got cameras. They're going to take our hand.
Hey, y'all, everybody.
Everyone loves a fairy tale. My once upon a time began 10 years ago, when I was born addicted to drugs and alcohol, with swelling up the brain and seizures. This princess had a happily ever after that did not look too promising. But when the clock struck midnight, my future changed. My foster aunt's adoptive parents may not have given me a glass liquor, but they gave me something way better. Wow, this is my story, but there are over 1,200 children in foster care in our region alone.
The Department for Family and Children's Services currently have only 157 foster homes in Region 3, and that is why we are asking for you and your family to please consider opening your home and hearts to these children in need. My name is Shelley. My husband Brian and I have been fostering for 18 years. We've welcomed over 120 children into our home. At times, it can be challenging. However, I can assure you, it's a highly rewarding experience. Most people have questions about becoming a foster parent, and that is why we are encouraging you to call the number on the screen before our questions are answered.
Your very own prince or princess is waiting. Will you be there happily ever after?
There it is. Appreciate it, and many thanks to Jody and Jeff. Oh, Lacy, they taught me how to get rid of this, too, here. Here we go. Thank you so much.
Kathy, thank you for what you do, and that was precious, so.
It was precious.
She has been in here, I think it was that last month's meeting, so.
Yes, she was here for the proclamation.
Absolutely, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you all. And if anybody's interested, do you mind if I just do a quick commercial? If anybody's interested in being a foster parent or any of the other opportunities for foster children, please get in touch with me. I've got business cards, I can tell y'all about it. Thank you.
I'd like to just say something. Thanks, Kathy, for all you do. Thanks just for the work that you're out there doing. It is, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. We went up and down. We could actually use 75 homes right now in Paulding County. You've got to take it a little bit at a time. Julie and I were foster parents for years, and that's a great story that Hannah has. And in my home, 10 years ago, we got a little boy. He was nine years old and weighed 42 pounds. It was kind of like another story that we had in this county not too long ago that I won't mention the name. He was 18 and weighed 80-something pounds. And the same story that that young man had, my Darren had. And I'll get through it. We never intended to adopt. We only intend, we only expected just to foster, and that was it. God has other plans in your life. And so there's all kinds of ways you can help with opening up your home for foster, open up your home for respite care, for weekend care. We've got to take care of our children, and the story that she tells with kids going to other counties, long ways, two and three hours away. We don't have 160-something kids in 21 homes in Paulding County. There are other places, and it's costly, and it's hard on them, it's hard on the family. They're taken out of homes, and they're not in the environment that they are familiar with, they're not driving by their school, and so it's tough. So we ended up with two more, not per plan, and we got them. And so I would just like to take just a second to ask you to ask yourself if you can be a foster parent. If you can't, talk to somebody that can. But kind of spread that word. And then I'd like to just take a second to tell my Darren, congratulations, he graduates Friday. And if you knew where Darren came from, he sent me a text today so he could turn in his blue robe for a white one, because he graduates with honor. So anyway, I love you, Darren, and y'all just see what you can do. It wasn't my plan, but I wouldn't have it any other way. So I apologize for crying all over y'all. Thank you. That's understood. Thank you, God, and again, thank you, Kathy. The Board of Commissioners, along with the West Georgia Regional Library Assistant Director, Justin Noble, and the New Georgia Library Manager, Kendra Winters, they're going to come forward. We'd like to present New Georgia Public Store Manager, Tina Maddox. Tina, if you come up front here with the West Georgia Regional Library of Excellence for large businesses in Paulding County with their support of the library. Cherry, come on up to our library director.
All right. How are y'all?
Cherry, you stand with us, since you don't have to. But if you've not been in the Publix store at New Georgia, it's fabulous, just like all their stores are, and we couldn't be prouder. Justin, I think you have a few things to say.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Good morning. My name is Justin Nobles. I'm the assistant director, not yet, but I am one of the librarians at the West Georgia Regional Library System, and this is the first year that we're giving this award. So this is very special to us, and I was actually a branch manager at the New Georgia Public Library, so it's very special for me to be able to present this award to you. What it is, is the West Georgia Regional Library Excellence in Library Support, and we're giving it annually during National Library Week, which is the second week in April, to recognize individuals, businesses, and organizations for their leadership and support of the West Georgia Regional Library System that goes above and beyond the call of duty. We have a lot of organizations and individuals and businesses that support our libraries, and it's businesses like Publix that go above and beyond that support. So we are honoring you today with that award, and Kendra, who's the branch manager of the New Georgia Public Library, is going to say a few words about why we nominated you.
The New Georgia Public Supermarket is a generous supporter of the New Georgia Public Library. Over the past six months, Publix has donated coloring sheets, 100-plus packs of crayons, juice boxes, and at least 16 dozen cookies for special programs. They provide word-of-mouth advertising for our programs. We have parents that have found out about our children's events from their past years. Publix has agreed to display our summer reading event calendars at their registers for the first week in June, and have never once asked for us to mention them as a sponsor or for anything in return. Manager Tina Maddox calls the library on a regular basis to see if there's anything that we are in need of for our events, and so we are very thankful to have such a gracious supporter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if y'all get busy, we'll get to it. Would you like to say anything on behalf of Publix?
Just thank you. It's nice to be recognized in the community, and no, we don't ask for recognition, it's just something that we do because we care.
Thank you. If I hadn't said it once, I'll say it again, shot above.
Thank you.
We, I have invited Debra Holden, but she would have come forward. We're going to go with home, sorry, Tabitha. You have a few members of your election board. We had an election on Tuesday, that's when we moved this meeting to the day. So I want to thank you for an awesome job that your team did, and say, I don't know how to say this, I just can't believe that like 13% of our votes voted. It's a shame, and we're going to have to have discussions about closing locations because it's just not, it's not, we can't afford it when that few people vote. It's really sad. We're going to look at the presidential file, it turns out, and then Debra will make a recommendation of closing some polling places. It almost seems like we worked harder at voting when we had to stand in line and wait a half a day and those type of things. Now we give early voting, we give all this online, we do everything we can do to help, and still, it's low voter turnout, so I'm sorry for the low voter turnout that y'all did.
Thank you. I want my staff to stand up. I have Ms. Peggy, she's our board chair, and then there's Shree Hamilton, she handles our absentee, and Ms. Lacey Dunn, I want to call her Lacey Becker, but Lacey Dunn, she handles all of our early voting. And then Felicia Womack is one of our newest employees, and she's the one who gets all these machines ready and they are deployed. She handles the stuff that I really like to handle. But they did a great job, so, yes. While I have a moment, I just want to let all of you know and the public know, we do have a runoff election. We will begin, are we voting on July the 5th? And the election date is July the 26th. We do have the commissioners runoff between Mr. Carmichael and Mr. Leggett, and we have the school board at large between Mr. Fuller and Mr. Watson. So please encourage people to come out and vote. I want to add to what Commissioner Austin says, you know, whether we vote 10,000 or we vote 50,000, it still costs the same. You know, we are criticized a lot for having too many people out in the polls, but if we don't have enough, we're criticized, too. I'm an over-prepare. I will continue to be an over-prepare because I have my board chair here. I also have a previous member of the Board of Elections in this audience as well that has seen us go through the fire. We've been on the news when we're not prepared enough. As long as I'm the election supervisor, we will be over-prepared. We will be there for the voter. We will do whatever it takes. I don't like people to have to stand in line, but we've gotten to the point that we've spoiled our voters so much that if they have to stand in line for 10 minutes, they're complaining. But we do need to do something, because I don't like coming to the store and asking for money, and then nobody turns out to vote. People need to vote. That's just, I'm going to preach it till I can't preach anymore. But this was a great election. The candidates all did well. We didn't have to see anybody fighting, we didn't have to call the sheriff. I mean, everything went really good. And that's the type of relations I like to have. But I think everybody ran a very good race. You know, it was, it was, it was very peaceful in the election office on election day. But we got to do something about this. I mean, if I could rent every billboard in the county to tell people that there's an election, I would. But it's up to us. Talk to our neighbors, talk to our churches, talk to the public and tell them there's an election. I know November will be crazy, but I do want us to seriously, in the beginning of 2017, to step back and look and see what our options are. We have 94,000 voters. That's going to continue to grow, because people are still coming and moving into Paulding County. Why not? We're a great county. We are. But we got to find new locations that will accommodate all these voters if we do start combining precincts. Some of our precincts we have now have close to 7,500 voters in them. You put three of those together, it's going to be a mess, but we can make it work. But y'all, please, just, I appreciate all the encouragement from every one of y'all. But we just got to do something, and I'm going to be asking each of you to meet with me for input. Maybe we can have a steering committee, I don't know. But it's not about making me happy or making you happy, it's about making the people happy. And we want to do whatever's going to be best for them. But like I say, I'm going to continue to be over-prepared to serve the public, that's who I work for, and hopefully, we can work together to get that word out and do what's best for this county. But thank you for everything that y'all do for us.
Thank you, Debra. Debra, thanks, all y'all, for your work, and no matter if the voter turnout's high or low, you've got a job you're doing, that's taking care of each voter. And you know, I think 10 years ago, we had 28 precincts. Now we've got 14. And some things I feel like that we're responsible for here in this building and on this board is just a cost of doing business. And we could prepare for a low turnout and get a big turnout. And so I appreciate the job you did. Everything I saw was great. You guys worked very hard, and you worked throughout the year, shows on election day. And so thank, thank each and every one of you for what you did. Okay. Ms. Wilson, thank you for bidding the chair, and y'all doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
No invited guest. Bid awards discuss action to approve the purchase of a CB44B, that's a paving compaction to Yankee Brothers Company, in the amount of $87,949.
Good morning. This is for an asphalt roller. It's to be used by our paving crew, and obviously, it's going to roll asphalt and hack it out. We have a state contract price, which is $87,949. Just to confirm that, we decided to get additional quotes. Those quotes were higher at $110,587 and $111,000, so we're doing, this is a very good quote. And it was brushed it out in 2016. Unless you have any questions.
Scott, do you want to add anything to the need of the roller? Be glad to hear it.
Thank you. This is a 15-year-old machine, maybe 16-years-old. Our paving train includes four pieces of equipment. If any one of those breaks down, the entire operation stops. So it's real important to have reliable equipment. This one has been subject to frequent breakdowns due to its age, and that's very inconvenient when we have a crew lined up to start placing asphalt. So I really appreciate that you approved this, and we'll go back to work.
Will you use the current one as a backup, or will you option it, or what will you do?
Yes, sir. In this case, the machine still has some life on it, and we would use it as a reserve machine. Thank you.
Any questions, Tabitha?
Tabitha, what was the amount budget for this? Do you have another?
This one was $90,000, so it was right at.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, and if it's okay for the next three items, finance has assisted with these RFPs, but Kelly and Lori have actually gone through the process and communicated on the election.
Perfect. Number two, discuss action to order contract for power services for the Richland Creek Reservoir and Treatment Plant and the reservoir pump station, based on the power, based on the results of RFP number 16012-3086. I'll go on with the others. Number three, discuss action to order contract for power services for the Paulding County Etowah River Pump Station to Georgia Power, based on the results of RFP 16012-3806. And then four, discuss action to order the repair of McDever Stream Bank Restoration Project to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, total development incorporated, in the amount of $114,810. Kevin?
Thank you, Chairman. Bid items number two and three are associated with the Richland Creek Water Supply Program, and the fourth one is associated with the Water Department, so Lori will be speaking about that. Bid items two and three are associated with power for the future water treatment plant and the river pump station. We're going to obviously need power servicing these new facilities, and so we went through a competitive procurement to be able to acquire that. We looked at the opportunity to maximize the response and get the best value, and we recognized that there are really two geographic locations where the power's going to be located. For the reservoir pump station and the water treatment plant, that's located at the RCR site, which, as you know, is within Paulding County. The Etowah River Pump Station is located about four miles away up in Barso County. So with this RFP, we gave flexibility to all the power suppliers to propose on both of the locations or one of the locations, depending on their service area and their ability to cost-effectively provide a proposal. For the Etowah River Pump Station, we actually received three different proposals, but for the water treatment plant and reservoir pump station, we received only one. We did anticipate a single proposal, because this location is heavily embedded in the graystone power service area, and they provide the highest level of redundancy and the easiest ability to be able to serve this plant compared to someone else who has to put large transmission mains down to be able to serve the facility. We evaluated the bid that they provided, and they did provide the very high level of redundancy that were desired for the facility. The level of redundancy that they're proposing is so high that we do not have to have the cost of emergency standby power, which is typically necessary at a facility like this. It's a critical facility, a hospital, a water treatment plant. If you lose power, you have emergency generators that are there to be able to turn back on and have the power. I'll show you their level of redundancy, and it's such a high level that we're able to not have to incur that cost within the new facility. We're also considered a critical customer on their list, which means if there is an issue with one of their service lines, that we are the highest priority, much like a hospital would be, and that's obviously necessary for a water facility. Their power costs were very competitive with the marketplace. They actually asked us to keep that confidential. In this presentation, I can provide it to the commission, but they're concerned about some of their other customers, you know, knowing what those numbers are, but I can't give that to you if you're interested. There's no upfront installation costs. The cost that they will incur of running the lines within the facility that I'm going to show you is actually built into their long-term rate, so there's no upfront costs that the county has to incur to do this. And most importantly, they can meet the aggressive schedule that's necessary for both temporary power, to get temporary power out there for construction, and then long-term permanent power to the site. So they can, they can put everything in place so that it's ready for when the contractor needs to start work, and then when the plant needs to actually start up. This is an image of their service area, and you can see the plant is located up here, up here in the northern part here. There are actually two independent substations that they have, and two independent feed lines that come up with several additional routes for the power to take. So if they had a major substation failure, which is very rare if ever that occurs, we have a completely redundant substation feeding mix. So this is the highest level of redundancy you could expect with three different circuits and two different independent substations. Our electrical engineers and the electrical engineers that worked on this project were fascinated with the level of redundancy, because we never see this. So this was like the perfect location for a critical facility like this. So this was like the perfect location for a critical facility like this. Additionally, um, when the power comes to the site, it's actually going to be all in underground dump banks. So instead of over, the power lines that have the potential for a, a tree to fall across them, it's actually embedded in concrete, uh, in case conduits that run, that runs underground. We've got parallel feeder lines that come in, and we actually have parallel transformers at the locations. So at each one of these locations, the water treatment plant or the reservoir pump station, there's a, there's a, there's a standby transformer, so if that ever failed, we'd be able to automatically kick back up. So once again, this is a very, very high level of redundancy. It allows us to avoid the high cost, which would be over a million dollars for standby power and then the long-term operating cost. That may deal with diesel fuel on-site and, and maintaining that and, and operating those generators. So this is a very good, uh, proposal for, for, for Paulding County and for the reservoir. We're very, very pleased with this. The, the second item, um, is for the Etowah River Pump Station, and in that location, uh, we actually got three proposers. So that, that's at the edge of the, the various systems where all, all three of the main power suppliers in the area felt that they could be competitive. So we received a proposal from, three proposals from Georgia Power. They provided three different options, a proposal from Greystone Power and a proposal from Cartersville Electric. We looked at, um, the cost as well as system, uh, reliability. Reliability is important at the river pump station, but it's not as critical. As you know, we have the reservoir that this pump station pumps into, so if we were down for, for a short period of time, even, even a week or a long period like a month, we have the reserve of water in the reservoir itself. So the reliability isn't as critical as, as at this location, so it wasn't way as heavily. Um, looking at the factors, uh, Georgia Power, their first option was best suited for, for Paulding County. It did have the highest reliability. They're able to come off of two different substations as well. Um, it has the easiest installation. Um, where we're located, right next to the Cartersville Airport, they're currently providing power there, so they're able to just run an underground line from the feed to the airport to the facility. So they don't have to acquire a separate power line easement through the Davis property, which is, which is a very positive thing. And they have the lowest cost. Once again, all the proposers asked to keep the costs, um, confidential, but we were able to, to show comparative costs by showing a net present value. And this is the power cost for the facility, a comparison among the different proposers, um, continuously operating for a five-year period, a ten-year period, and a twenty-year period, to show you, uh, the, the various options. And you can see Georgia Power had the lowest cost, um, and, and their option one, although over a five-year period, it's, it's a little bit higher than option two, long-term, um, it's by far the best. And over a twenty-year, twenty-year present, um, value, there's over a million-dollar savings. So, um, their different options were just based on, um, uh, different percentages of fixed rate versus, um, market rate and, and variable rate, um, costs associated with the power. And, um, we're recommending to, to move forward with option one. Gives you the high level of redundancy they have with their system and gives you the best low-cost economic, um, value. All these power costs fall within the operating cost budget that was established for the, the water plant. When we look at what the long-term, um, operating cost will be, um, these, these costs, the cost for power for both these installations fall within what was budgeted for that.
All of these items come to us as, uh, a recommendation from the Water and Sewer Board?
Yes, sir. These both went in front of the Water and Sewer Authority Board last week and, and were, were approved for a recommendation.
And most all the time, there's one or two of us in, in that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Here in the presentation. Uh, any discussion on items two and three? I, I've read four, so if you wanna talk about, uh, McKeever's Stream Bank?
We have a situation with the, approximately three weeks ago, uh, we found a situation with our McKeever's lift station up in the Mountwater area, um, and, and it, it's located along McKeever's branch, which is a tributary to Pumpkin Vine Creek. It is a, I have some photos to, to show you. We have, we have twin force mains coming from that lift station across the creek. Uh, you'll, you'll see that there is a wall that has been washed out from the way it was, it has left these, and it broke, the stream bank has eroded, the, the force mains have started to actually drop a bit, um, and it was, we found the situation worsening to the point that we had, over the course of a week, we went from about an inch and a half gap to about a three-inch drop in, in that case, and coming across the creek. Uh, we've taken on that design in-house to, uh, armor that creek with, with rock gabions, um, and also to install check dams across the creek on the, on the, the drain easement that is coming down and coming up and, and basically having water coming across that creek, um, into the, into this bank that is, that is eroding. The, uh, we solicited pricing from vendors who do this type of, of stream bank restoration. We received four price, four prices, um, ranging from a low of ninety-four thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to as high as two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. The, uh, the, a lot of this has to do with the, the firm's availability to mobilize quickly and get the, get this work done, preventing a situation that in the event of failure, uh, we would have sewage in the creek. So it's, uh, it was imperative that, that we get someone mobilized quickly. We're recommending, uh, that we award this in the, for a total of one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars with a twenty-thousand-dollar contingency for unforeseen conditions that, that we may find with the next one.
Uh, thank you, Lori. One of those things that we have to take care of. Any questions? Do you have any?
I was in the, uh, Water Sewer meeting last week, and both of these presentations were done. The guys and girls in the Water Sewer Authority made some great, asked great questions and comments, and, uh, I just appreciate y'all being very thorough with what we're doing with the reservoir, sharing with the public. It was a great presentation, the Water Sewer Board, thought we did a great, Water Sewer Board did a great job. And, uh, a lot of good questions, so thanks. Thanks for bringing it to us. Sometimes you just gotta take care of what you gotta take care of.
Thanks. Um, public participation on agenda items, you know, what's that? Uh, agenda, uh, two, send agendas. Number one, appoint nine of law firms to the Paulding County Defects Board for a term of July one, twenty-sixteen to June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, number two, adopt job classification, HVAC technician, uh, for the government building department. Brian Ackert has worked on that with, um, Mike Laird and with, with Tabitha, and we've actually taken, uh, two job classifications and moved them into one in order to have a, uh, HVAC person classified to help us here in the complex. Did I say all that right, Mike? Brian, anything else you wanna add to that?
Good.
Okay. Uh, we'd like to move either one of these two items to regular session. Here in non-noable business under new business, discuss action to adopt resolution sixteen dash twenty-two, adopt the Paulding County Water System and Water Sewer Race and Fees and Schedule. Uh, Lori, you made this presentation the other day to the Water and Sewer?
Yes, I did.
Department. Do you wanna go over that one?
We have a situation in the Sweetwater Basin with being under contract with Cobb County for the sewer, that, uh, sewer service to that area. And our fee schedule accounts for the fees that need to be paid directly to Cobb County when a property is developed, um, and, and a, and a portion of, of the fees that is for Paulding County for the, the collection system extending up through our county. The, uh, one of the things that we have been finding and working with developers who are looking at property in that area is that, um, having to pay the fees as well as developing onsite wastewater systems to serve them in that interim period until public sewer is available, uh, is having a, a negative impact on, on attracting and businesses to the Sweetwater Basin. Uh, we have proposed, we're proposing in this resolution a change to the fee schedule that will allow for development to pay the Cobb County portion of the fees, um, upfront as they would today, uh, on permitting, um, but then defer the Paulding County portion of those fees until they make the, until they're ready to connect to the sewer system. Uh, we ran a, an example of what that would mean for, um, just say a fifty-four-seat fast-food restaurant locating in that basin. The total fees in the Sweetwater Basin would be seventeen thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, um, based on the fee schedule that we have today. With the proposed changes to, to the, the fee schedule, forty-five percent of that would be collected upfront, uh, or seventy-nine ninety-two would be collected upfront, and they would defer nine thousand seven hundred and twenty of it until it's time to connect to, uh, public sewer in the basin. Uh, the feedback we've gotten is this would, would help promote the commercial development in the, in the Sweetwater Basin, um, and so we brought that for your consideration.
Any questions that you don't have, Lori? We've had a lot, a lot of discussion. Thank you for the work you've done, Lori.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wilson. This will help that area.
It will. Thank you. That's the conclusion of a regular business session. I thought that would get you out of here. Uh, so executive session, we have Nancy Hoffes wants to speak about elections.
I, uh, before we do that, I would like to make a motion, open discussion pertaining to the airport authority in this November year, meeting at the airport location. This is just for discussion only. Possibly put it on the agenda lately, later. And I'd like to make that move at this time.
I should have a discussion about that in a second.
I'll second the motion. It's set. All of them say aye. Aye. Uh, we're, we're gonna have a discussion.
Open a discussion as I'm saying what you want to say.
You can say it for just a minute.
Okay. And I do understand that we... I will, I said that in November of two thousand fourteen, there was an intergovernmental agreement formed here on this board that it approved. Um, and from that time to this, we always had our airport authority meeting there over here. Uh, and recently, I felt impressed sometime back to do this, but I haven't done it. I have not got clarification on a lot of things that I'd like to have clarification on. And I'll open this for clarification on the IGA and also on the airport authority. Should they be meeting here or should they be meeting at the airport? That's, at this time, what I'm hoping.
Guys, in response to you, I, I believe that I understand what you're doing, is that you're wanting me to research that issue, which I'm happy to, but I don't have any of that in front of me at the moment.
That's true.
So I wouldn't need to do that, and I can get sort of responsive documents to you.
Well, there's been, there's been a lot of talk about it, so not to bring anything. This is for discussion.
Discussion?
Not to bring anything negative, but, um, they have had meetings here. Um, and there were some things said in the meeting yesterday that kind of alluded to the fact that, uh, they didn't wanna have them out of the airport, because maybe they could tell me if I'm wrong. They didn't feel safe. And they, you know, talked about, uh, maybe, uh, a couple houses getting broken into or some people saying some things on the internet. And, uh, and I felt like it kind of alluded to the fact that it would be against the anti-commercial people or against the, the anti-one-forty-nine people. And so I, I wanna make that clear that in no time has, uh, Sheriff Gary Koldge or anybody else said that there was anything that pointed a finger towards the people that don't support the commercialization of the airport. And, uh, so, so I, I felt that was a little unfair yesterday because nobody could come back and talk about it. Um, I would like to see the meetings out there for, for a couple reasons. Sometimes when you, the airport authority are always had the meetings out there, we've never had any issues out there. And when you're having meetings out there, the perception is, you know, you're having a meeting here, people get to see the airport and everything's open and transparent. When you're, when you're there, you're able to see that. When you're having them here, the perception with a lot of folks is what's going on at the airport that they don't want us out there. So as a healing process, I would think it would be nice to be able to have those meetings back out there. And I think the public, both on both sides of the issue, whether they're for or against it, I think for the most part have been, for the most part have been pretty cordial to one another. And, uh, I have never felt threatened or anything else. We had our, the environmental assessment meeting out there in December of fifteen last year, and, uh, that was a time where passions and tempers could have been high on both sides, and, and there was a couple people that made a couple outbursts, but other than that, nobody felt unsafe. And, uh, so I would like to see that happen, kind of check into what we need to do. And I guess what Tommy's saying is the intergovernmental agreement was done. They wanted to separate themselves. And, um, I think it would be a good thing for all of us to be out there at the meeting where we can talk about it more every time.
Well, I'm, I'm the one that requested to have the meeting moved here and have people go through mental detection. Uh, my life was threatened. There was a comment similar to my brains would look good on the wallpaper. Uh, I don't, I don't take threats like that lightly. Uh, and my house was broken into and the only thing they stole was a computer. And they got some jewelry to make it look like it for some other reason. And my wife said, I don't feel safe going back up there under tense situations. And, uh, surely I walk through the parking lot every day. I go to the grocery store. I go a lot of places, but it's not the middle of emotional meetings where people get excited. And I asked the airport board to move the meetings here and let's ask them to go through mental detection devices. And, uh, I've said to, uh, at least two of these gentlemen up here, uh, if your wives had called me and asked me not to move a meeting because they felt for your sake, then I, I'm with that for instance. And, uh, you know, I'll be off the board in January, and if y'all want to move in in January, that's fine, but, uh, and I've said publicly, I'm gonna be attending a meeting up there under those circumstances. And y'all know that, and, uh, again, I wouldn't do it to you, but if you choose to move forward with it, y'all have four months.
Were you making assumptions out of these votes that people have? I mean, I saw you in public, I mean, you lived around the corner from me. I saw you publicly right after your house was broken into. A friend of mine's house was broken into the previous week. I told you to talk to the sheriff about it because there was a, um, he, he felt that he had information that would find his laptop. All they took was a laptop out of his house. Um, you, you can't just assume that people are, that somebody breaks into your house. You know, maybe they wanted the jewelry and they took the computer to make it look like that. So I think you're, I think you're making some pretty big assumptions. And I'm sorry your house kept going into, um, but I, I just, I don't think it's fair to, I don't think, what? I don't think it's fair to sit there and, and imply that, um, certain groups of people who disagree with you would, would break into your house.
I'm not saying that.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you get people go through mental detection, you don't have to worry about it as much. And it's a concern that my family has. And I'd like to say to y'all, I wouldn't ask them to move back up there, but it's y'all's decision.
Mr. Chairman, we're not voting today, but I see pros and cons of voting places. I see pros happening here, pros happening there, cons happening here, cons happening there. I guess one pro, I could see if it would have been at the airport the whole time. When Mr. Smith came in and placed the documents on the seats and tried to run someone's character in this room, there were no cameras at airports and we would not have known he did that. So that was a positive happened here. We got to find that out. I really don't care where it is. I do want to address the primary matter issue. I think sometimes you take that out of context. It wasn't about you, that it was about information overload, that people got so much information that their brains would explode what she had said. That wasn't to you. I read the comment, it was nothing towards you.
Well, there have been other emails sent to me personally. It wasn't shared publicly, and that's one of the concerns I have with my family. But if y'all feel the need to move a meeting, then that's the direction you want to go in. We can talk about it a little bit later. Did Lonnie, where she needs to get?
Well, I'd like the opportunity, because I know there's a clause about providing police protection. So I'd like to read that and give you something back as opposed to just trying to remember that off the top of my head.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, so maybe you can get back with us. But I think there's been some things on both sides. I think there's been a lot of things, Mr. Austin, maybe that we haven't discussed that have actually happened to individuals on this board that haven't been discussed in public. Some people probably wouldn't want to be discussed in public. I just think that is a step in the right direction to work together. And if Lonnie, if you could get back with us, that would be great. We could talk about it. Mr. Collet, an answer back on that.
Yeah, I'm positive of that, thank you. Everybody in Canada, we have a movie studio, and the June 14th meeting will be on the agenda. We've got two gentlemen come in who are discussing a proposal for a movie studio. I think it's very interesting. I just want to get that out now. I want as many people here that want to be here to hear it. I'm not trying to hide anything, but I have the other gentleman. I guess I can say that they're going to be, but Robert Reynolds will do a presentation. He's our economic development director and a business owner in the county named Matt LaSalle that will also be going on the presentation. I'm super interested in what you treat here.
Sorry, I'm just hollering shit.
That's okay. I just want, can I? No, good, okay. I just want to thank you guys. I put on the election last year, last week because we have had problems in the past on Election Day. But Mr. Chairman, everyone, the Department of Rec, the School Board, the Marshals, you guys, especially the teachers department and everyone, this is one of the smoothest run-in elections. The board told me they were bored most of the day because there was nothing to do. So that's a good thing. The voters did let us down by not turning out. I think there was a lot of reasons. We were going door-to-door eight o'clock on Monday night, and they were telling us, oh, there's an election tomorrow. They didn't go. I think the presidential preference confused a lot of people. Another thing that confused a lot of people, they looked at the ballot and they said, I don't know anything about these people. I haven't heard, I don't know anything about these people, so I don't know who to vote for. And if you look at what happened, you can tell that because the people that were elected or re-elected or they have held office in this county before. We have always said we don't like an uneducated voter, so I guess the voters took that to heart. They felt they were uneducated about the candidates that were out there, so they didn't vote. We had some of the best candidates we have ever had. I don't speak for anyone, but look for many of these candidates to be back in two to four years to run again because they care about this county, going all over this county. And we went all over this county in eight weeks into over 3,000 homes. The issues out there that you think are out there aren't out there necessarily. One is sewer or the lack of sewer, roads. The fact that many people in this county feel like they are not being, they are being ignored by you guys because of one issue, and you know what it is, you just talked about it. They like the airport, they don't like the airport, whatever it is. What the citizens are tired of is the airport, period. So that's all I have to say.
Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Exactly. All favor say aye.